Good evening. Can everybody hear me? Out there?
Yes.
All right. Okay. I'd like to call the Dover Select Board meeting to order at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, May the 3rd. First, public comments. Yes, Paul.
I'm Paul Fisher. So it's a little late, um, a little long Hathaway Trail. And so I'm interested in that. I'm going to discussion about how that sort of would be used down through the town whilst the you're going to control usage, you're allowed things like those tours to go through the vehicles. And I know I'm, I'm, I'm meeting late. I missed the meeting last time when the, uh, the SoCo Club was awarded some money to work on Hathaway Trail. And so I'm interested in, um, I know that work is not really related to the mud pit. It's on Hathaway Trail, but there's been discussion if that gets fixed, that could enable more traffic that we might not want to discuss. So I just wanted to see, I realize this is late. I apologize for coming immediately late to this. But I want to see if it's possible to just have a sticky mission with the money that was awarded to SoCo. They'll do the work, they're planning, but not change that mud pit until the town makes a big decision about that and how the trail's going to be used.
Eric? Can you speak to this? Paul's concerned.
So. What was, what was approved at the previous meeting did not specify whether or not the mud pit itself was included in the repairs. We are having, we will continually be having a much larger discussion about the uses or user groups invited to use Hathaway Trail, but that conversation is a long way from coming to a, a solution just because of all the interested parties in the discussion. Let, I, I will speak to Mr. Garber to see if his, and if what he was approved for had included the repairs to that mud pit, or if this was repairs on either side.
I'm not sure if it's a full, I, I think that they may mitigate some of it. I think there's a lot of other things that they were going to do on the trail and that, that conversation about the four-wheel trail groups and things like that certainly was had and, and there is concern by a lot of people about, about increase, increased usage. So it's definitely on our radar screen for sure.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Hi Sarah, your hand is up. You're here.
I was just covering my mouth because I was coughing.
Michelle, do you have a question?
No. Do I have my hand raised?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, it's us. I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right. So moving on, we're going to move to the assessor. And so Linda Sherman. First, is property not issued a tax bill in a timely manner? Can you explain the circumstances about what happened and what the implications were for, are for the town?
I will try my best. Uh, so Trail's edge condominiums, there was a new unit was sold. And what happened was it was not made in an active parcel. It was still connected to the developers. Part, so the developer got the tax bill for everything and the buyer did not receive the tax bill. So I, from what I remember, there was some money paid at closing. So it left, I want to say a balance of around 12,000 or 13,000. So that is not payable by him apparently. So it was also after the time for an E and O to work. I wasn't notified until the end of January that this had happened. So basically there was nothing that I could do at that point.
What tax year did this happen in?
Twenty-one, right? Yeah, twenty-one.
So you've, you've asked questions by the state and, and because we did not provide a timely tax bill, you're saying that the property does not have to pay property taxes for that, that, that year?
The owner's technically not liable for that. So, uh, basically the town eats that and still on the fence for the education piece, I believe.
I'm guessing that the town is going to have to pay that as well to the state. That they don't seem to want to take any of that kind of situation into consideration. We just have to pay what we have to pay. And so now the other property that was billed for this, this condominium, tell, what's the situation with that? Did they didn't pay their tax bill?
I, that's not my, that would be a question for Marco.
Because they were, they felt they were billed an era for?
I did not have any correspondence whatsoever with the developer and my understanding is that he's now deceased. So if it had been, like I say, if it had been brought to my attention prior to December, then this would have all worked out. But you were, you want to speak to this?
If I can. Uh, so we got a call from the, the parcel that was spun off from the developer and the gentleman said that he had never gotten a tax bill. So when we looked into it, we realized that the parcel was inactive. And after further research, um, because the, because of how the assessed value wasn't included in the grand list and the gentleman wasn't given very sufficient notice and we were beyond the error of admissions period, essentially the owner is not obligated legally to pay that bill. Then concurrently, we were trying to track down the developer because his tax bill was not being paid. Turns out he's deceased. However, we did reach his attorney recently and the attorney, according to the attorney, they sold everything off. So there shouldn't be a tax bill because the last parcel was sold prior to, according to him, prior to, it was like March of 2020, prior to when, prior to the April 1st, right? So. But then Linda looked into that and apparently that the developer should be entitled to some part of the tax bill because there are some development rights and some partially finished properties that are still, that still belong to the developer. That's the latest development. So that's what I know.
Okay, Linda?
Can I, I would just correct that. So my information says there are, there's still three development, three units to be developed. At this point, all of the units that are built are built to a hundred percent complete. That just was not updated in my records. So the tax bill that went to the developer included all of that plus the unit that had been finished and sold. So that it was eight twenty-five was included in that developer's bill. So essentially there was a tax bill. It just didn't go to the right person and I don't, I don't know what we as a town, what kind of recourse can the developer go after the owner? There is no developer, but can the estate, I, those are questions that.
But the developer is not required to pay that tax for the sold unit because there's a unit sold.
Can I ask a question?
Okay, okay.
Thank you. When was this unit sold? What is the date that it trans, transferred?
October of twenty-one.
Lenven was October tenth.
So we're talking about this year's tax bill, correct? Twenty-one, twenty-two?
No, twenty to twenty-one.
Twenty, twenty-one. So it's sold in October of two thousand twenty?
Right.
Yeah, it sold in October of twenty twenty.
So.
So it's gone from October two thousand twenty until when did you, uh, when did Marco, you find out that this was not correct?
I found out approximately on, uh, let's see, when did I speak to? So he purchased it from Nedski in September of twenty twenty. It was recorded on October 6th, twenty twenty. And I believe I spoke to Lenven, which is the company, uh, early March of twenty twenty-two because he said he did not. He just was dialing around saying, hey, was I supposed to get a tax bill? You know, did I not get a tax bill? So that's when it came to my attention. I looked in the grand list and in NIMRIC on my side of the grand list and it's inactive. Correct.
Twenty-two.
Yeah, twenty-two.
So, correct, October two thousand twenty. Last year was twenty-one. So does that mean we didn't get any tax for the twenty twenty-one year? For that prop, for that?
For the current year, that's just.
And in this current year is twenty-one to twenty-two.
But that hasn't come up. Yes, FY twenty-one.
Twenty-two, are we getting paid for that?
No.
No.
So we didn't get paid for?
We didn't get paid in September of twenty twenty-one and we didn't get paid in February of twenty twenty-two. By either the spin-off parcel or the master parcel. The master parcel which exists is incorrect.
And this probably tied up.
So this is, this is a substantial amount of money. Correct or incorrect?
Well, the spin-off parcel is fourteen thousand in taxes, sixteen thousand, and the developers got forty thousand.
So the developer right now is a?
But part of that forty, part of the developer's parcel is the spin-off parcel. So really it's not, you can't look at them, you can't add both tax bills together. You have to, it's all in the developer.
So the developer or the estate is responsible for everything less that unit?
Correct. The problem is that if we were to go to the developer right now, if his attorney were sitting right here, we wouldn't be able to, this town wouldn't be able to tell him what his tax bill should be. So, at least I can.
Yes, you may.
Thank you. So I'm still, still, I, I've got this. We've talked about this. I still have not heard why it happened and why is it not going to happen again? I'm not, I'm asking both. I'm not, it's not you because you're looking at whatever. I'm just asking Linda, how did this occur and how is it not going to occur again? Is what I'm asking you straightforward. Why did it occur? How is it not going to occur again? So it doesn't happen again. That's what I'm asking you so that we don't have this problem.
So it occurred. Obviously I made a mistake.
Okay.
And Susan and I are working, moving forward to develop a system that will be able to check and double check especially those types of parcels. Now that there's somebody to help double check and to make sure that those parcels that are supposed to be activated have been and vice versa.
So basically what we're saying is it slipped through the cracks in your office.
Yes.
And it did not get, when it came through your filing, it did not get transferred or turned on to Marco, onto the NIMRIC side that it was sold and processed.
Correct.
What I needed to know.
Are there other comments from the board? Questions? So, um, I would like to see that procedure, um, kind of, it doesn't have to be long and involved, but I'd like to see it in writing so that you guys have that double check system. So if you could develop a short, um, you know, yes, Linda?
I can say it really is not going to happen until after June. It's really, we're in time crunch.
Okay, I understand, I understand. But does that seem, seem like something that, so then, then it's a developed, written down piece of guidelines about how to double check on things like this?
Once we have that, we'll get it right to you.
Okay. Any questions or comments from anybody else? Sarah?
Yeah, um, so this is a procedure that you can't implement until June because of time constraints. But is it the kind of system that you will then be able to go backwards from June to now to, to catch anything that might have fallen through the cracks in that period of time?
Linda?
So I'm not looking to implement it. I mean, we won't come up with the procedure until after the grand list is lodged. I mean, I, I know I made a huge error and but I also, I don't have time to, to do this right now. And we are talking about it. We're having discussions as we can, but to actually take the time to sit down and put that in a form to give to the board, I just beg for that time to do it. Well, it's next month, so it's not that far off.
Susan, so I just wanted to say that yes, we're not going to be able to put something formal together. But I think having this experience has made us hyper-aware of, you know, what, and I think what Sarah's asking is can we kind of be very careful by the time the grand list is established to at least go through developments where there could potentially be problems and, and double check and make sure that's not a problem. Just having a second set of eyes on things, I think will help a lot. So.
Okay. Marco?
Can we deal with current problems so that we can get something out of your office that will be coherent to bring to the developer?
He's asking to resolve the emerged master property so that we can?
Get something from the developer.
To, to, to send him a corrected bill.
It will happen in this grand list coming out.
What about what's?
Not prior to. I can't, I can't correct it.
Well, that's too late. So.
So are you?
So, so the developer is not responsible for that unit that's valued at eight hundred something thousand dollars. And he's been presented, although he is not alive anymore, the estate has that bill which has been correct. He is not liable to pay for that. So somehow we, how does he know what to pay? How, how, or how does the estate know what to pay? It seems like it's a catch-22. Because they can't pay the, the bill one, but if he was alive, he wouldn't, he wouldn't know what the, what the proper amount was to pay. So of course we, we can't, who's going to pay a bill when they're not sure how much they owe? Yes?
I don't, I will make a call tomorrow. I don't, I don't think I can dummy a bill. I don't think that's, can you give Marco which?
Well, there was, we, we did send a bill. You know, even though the address comes back, we did send it to the best known address. It's just that I think if we were to present the attorney of the estate a correction of what it would have been, had it been done properly, that we may be able to get, like, maybe able to get some resolution from the estate as to what it should have been. We're obviously going to have to write off Lenven, spinoff, but can present some what the correct value is to the developer, given the development rights, unfinished parcels and the spin-off property. We can at least start there, just to at least know what it is. We should know what it is.
So it sounds like you're asking, Linda, can you change the assessment or what, and correct it? So with, and then send it to you so you can determine what the tax bill should be?
Well, I can knock out the tax bill, you know, that.
Well, then, I, I mean, I, I guess it could come and, and then if there's no other way to correct it, it could come in front of the Board of Abatement to abate taxes that really weren't his taxes, which were on the property that was sold.
Also going to have to explain to the auditors what we should have some, a paper trail for them to know, know some support to them as to what we're writing off. So.
Yes.
In my converse, my last conversation with the state, uh, I was told that the actual recourse would be abatement at this point. So I will double check to make sure that that is the proper channel of, and and go from there.
But I think that getting a corrected tax bill is, is incredibly important because who would pay a bill when they know that, that, that it's incorrect? So.
And I can, I will create the assessment based on what I know now.
Anything?
I'm not going to be mean here. Can that be done by, can be done in two or three days? Yes. So that Marco can start trying to recoup some of the taxes from the estate side. That would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Anything else on the, the property tax bill? Okay, so the second part under the assessor is update on the reappraisal bid and the new addendum with additional bid requirements. So let's give some background about the reappraisal bids. So we had two firms bid based on our assessor's recommendation and we went, we awarded the bid to, to the company, what's the name of the company, Linda?
NEMC.
NEMC. Which is a company that we haven't dealt with before.
Correct.
So, but after that decision, and we have not signed anything yet, the current, the, the people who did our last assessment had some serious questions. And so they sent a couple of letters to, to the town asking, um, you know, for clarification and for, um, additional information about things that were or were not in the RFP. So Linda and Susan, and we have decided that some of the questions are valid. And so they're putting together, they've put together an addendum to provide more information on several, several questions and send it back to these two, two companies for clarification, including references of people we can contact, whether mountains, snows included in the, uh, the bid, uh, things like that. And so Linda sent it out to the board. And everybody hopefully looked at that. Did everybody get back to you?
Well, it was sent two weeks ago. So I hope you all got it. We sent it so you'd have a good amount of time to look it over. Uh, I received from Sarah, uh, yesterday. I received it back with some editing, which was taken care of today. And then I returned the edited copy, knowing it would be late, but figured you would at least have it.
What she edited really wasn't, and Laura, Laura, I mean, Sarah, you can speak to this. It was more just grammatical, right?
Yeah, it was just, it wasn't formatting. There was only one comment I made. There was a, there was a point. Um, let me see if I can pull my copy up. There was a point that asked about changing the software, but I think that was only one of the companies that had proposed that. So my comment was to include that on one of the addendums to the relevant company, but just exclude it on the, on the company that wasn't recommending that. We just didn't need to include that.
You go ahead. So, thank you for sending that back. Um, we looked at that and obviously there's, one of the, uh, companies is the existing software. So I, we decided it needed to stay in just because I want him to speak to, why should we keep the existing software?
Okay, then the wording needs to be changed because the wording implies that they are automatically recommending a change. So it just needs to be clear that what you're saying is if you are recommending a change to the software, why? And if not, why not?
Can I speak to that?
Yes.
Okay, so actually Sarah, I disagree. It, I mean, it says details on the benefits of the Kama software package being proposed. The town of Dover is currently using the ProVale, ProVal software system. If you are recommending a change of software, please describe the process of creating a new system for the town and any potential issues that may occur in the transfer of data. So the way I'm reading this is details on the benefits of the software being proposed, it looks like.
I would just take out Kama then.
Well, they're both Kama. They, these are all Kama programs.
Okay. Um, okay.
To me, it's just saying both of you need to give the benefits of either program. Does that make sense?
Well, except you said, what, what's the difference between Kama and ProVal?
Uh, ProVale is Kama.
Oh, okay.
Computer assisted mass appraisal. That's, that's what.
Okay. I misunderstood. I thought the, the ProVal and the Kama were two different things.
No, sorry. No.
So what's the name of the other one?
It is, uh, the company is Patriot. I'm going to get it confused. Patriot. Is it Vaxxion Mall or is that the assess pro, assess pro? Which is through, uh, the Patriot group.
So maybe it should just say, please, please give us the, the benefits of the one you're proposing and you know, how, how, how hard, if it's a new system, it is to be integrated. That's fair. But give us the benefits of, of the software that you're proposing, that is in your bid. I mean, it's pretty basic. And if it's a new system from what we're currently using, uh, tell us how it's going to integrate.
I think just. Why it's a better choice than the one we're currently?
Yes.
Because using the one that we're already using, there's, there's certainly a lot less effort to just continue using the same one. So in my mind, switching systems, there'd have to be a rather overwhelming benefit to the new system. If we're going to go through the effort of, of moving everything over, unless it's seamless, unless you just like, it takes all of our data and just plops it right in and there's no drop, there's no transit, no manual effort to transition from one to the other.
Susan? So I, I just wanted to mention that, you know, that's part of checking the references because there's certainly towns that have done that successfully and that are not complaining, but we didn't check references because that wasn't requested in the RFP. So I think this will give Russ the opportunity to defend ProVal and say, for all the good reasons why we should keep it. And Bill to say, you know, we've done it X, Y, and Z here. We can call the references and then make the decision. It's just.
And Bill to say, you know, we've done it X, Y, and Z here, we can call the references and then make the decision, it's just an informed decision, we don't have that yet.
So have you been in contact with both these companies that there is gonna be more information needed? They seem fine with the fact that they're gonna have to. Come out and actually show us. In person, you know, it's a large contract, so we. As leaders of this assessor's office get a better understanding, so we can make a more correct choice.
Exactly, yes, I've spoken with both.
I just, I just, my concern is that we're going down this path, but one's not gonna wanna come out and do the work and then we're stuck. Not getting the information we need to make a good decision.
Well, ideally, it'd be great if they could come in person, but I think that even if they did a video presentation, it would, it would suffice, so.
Yeah, they're both.
So that, that's not, uh, so if you, do you still wanna get this out so you can get them back by the twenty seventh of May, the?
That would be ideal, just so we can. Get these back and then. We'll, we're gonna have to come up with. A date and there's many things from now. I mean, we talked uh two weeks ago that, you know, things are happening in May, June. We're looking forward into possibly August of having them do a presentation. And uh.
So if you would clean up that particular paragraph right there, that day, that point. Um, and send it out and if, and if I'm gonna ask Sarah to read it and I will read it and. Huh?
I don't need to read.
Okay, and then we will, we will make sure that um it's okay, and that can happen tomorrow.
Yes.
Tomorrow, right, Sarah?
Yep.
She's moving, she said yes, you're. Can you turn it up?
Sorry, barring, barring ill. Barring illness, yes, I can do it tomorrow.
Okay, all right.
Great.
Great, thank you, thank you, and so then you can get it out still on the same timeline. Great. Anything else for the assessor's office? Thank you both for showing up, I appreciate it and for the information. Next, we're moving on to the highway department. Hi Travis.
Sorry for my tiredness.
You're here in time for your. Okay, so the first thing we're gonna talk about is the water system bids for the town office. Very close in price.
Yes, very close in price.
Are they the same, same unit or is it?
Same different, different names, they both do the same thing.
So talk to us about this.
Um, this is the water softener system that we looked at installing in this building. One, two years ago. Um, it's needed to solve our our water problem and it's gonna save on our. Our heating, hot water heating system or replace some stuff in this building, so.
Um. Do you know with these two bids being that they're so close together? In terms of cost, one is thirty three oh one and one is thirty three ninety, is there a difference in the cost of the chemicals for a water softener system?
Um, not that I'm aware of.
But it's, you know, some of them, it's, it's, could be a special grind or additive or so, I don't know.
I hadn't, I hadn't done that much research into it.
So I'm curious what the cost of the annual um.
Annual.
Yeah, mi- materials that you have to use, because it's usually putting bags of salt in a, yeah. Um, but do you have an inclination who you would prefer to go with?
I, I recommend mine well. Um, they taking care of us and serve us well here, they know ours building well, I am. That's who I would recommend.
Any, Dan?
Uh, yes, Lyman uh does the Dover Historical Society and also Snow Mountain Market. And they all get their chemicals from W W who delivers it by pallet.
Any other questions from the board about the water softener bid? Somebody wanna make a motion?
I make a motion, we go with the water softener. For Litwell at three thousand three hundred and one dollars.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All good, okay, the next one we're gonna talk about is. The paving bids, this has, we have a lot more um opportunities here.
Yes.
So we had five bids for paving, so. Talk to us about this and including the two hundred thousand dollar.
Yes, we received a, I applied for grant in April, early April. And we received. Two hundred thousand dollar paving grant from the state of Vermont. The town of Dover, as my understanding, not seen one of these in many years, many years.
And this will be used uh.
This will be, this can be used on our class two road only, which is handle road, over hill.
Hmm, so you're gonna, you're gonna target it towards lower day, lower.
We were doing the handle road anyways, is it true?
Yes, I had, so some of it is so bad, I had scheduled to do it regardless, I knew I was gonna fight for the bid, but. I, if we didn't get it, at least the worst of it was gonna get paved.
That's great.
So we got it and we'll be able to do what we were gonna do plus extra, so we should go. Clear from Tannery Road to the Wilmington line.
Great.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, so that's fantastic, I'm glad, it has been quite a few years that I can remember.
I, I've got a question on that road and you can answer them all. It's got pretty big potholes in those sections, is there anything you can do? To. Firm up those areas so it doesn't occur so quickly, is there anything we can do?
That's.
In those areas than just throwing in all their pavement on it, because we've ground down all the roads. And now we're supposed to, but it seems like we're already getting back to that same situation, so I'm just asking the question, I know that road gets heavily, heavily traveled in. The worst months of the year in the winter, when we have all the traffic coming back and forth, so I'm just asking if there's anything we can do to. Firm up a couple of those areas and spend a little bit of money to hopefully go a little bit longer.
There is, and with the state. Funding, it'll be much better, hopefully, um, yes, they're gonna. Do two layers instead of one thick layer, one thick layer will, the cracks will, the waves will all come right back in a year. So they're gonna come do, come through, now that we got the grant, they're gonna come through and do an inch shim. To bring everything level.
Correct.
And then they're gonna do an inch and a quarter top. Which is another decent amount, two layers instead of one.
Hmm.
And the reason, another reason why that's broken apart so bad too is. It's my understanding that it doesn't, it's only been paved once. Since it's been all redone with water line and everything, so it's, it's X amount of years old. Water line and every, this is all within settled, gets all that traffic that you say and. You know, that's, that's what I put. In my application to the state was that road need, needs extra asphalt for strength.
Yeah, okay.
And that's how hopefully we can accomplish it.
Good, well, at least we have some extra funds to help.
Yes.
I don't know if there's any more drainage around the corner there by the hermitage would help too, just get that water.
We certainly can look into that, this.
Just.
Cover that as well.
Okay, you good with that, Joe?
I just.
Anybody else on that, on the handle road issue? Okay, so talk to us about these bids.
The bids vary, they're all over the place and as they should be with the price of oil, you know. Price of liquid asphalt is all over the place. Um. But.
So they raised from seventy seven fifty per ton up to ninety eight fifty.
Yes.
That's a big.
That's a big. Yes.
Do you know what we paid last year?
Seventy six, I believe.
Okay.
Those we paid off last year's.
That was last year.
So who are you suggesting?
I suggest we go with Springfield paving. I, I think that. It. They are the way he used before for many years and. Um, the other thing too is they're gonna get their mix from. The Bennington area, Bennington Shasberry area.
Better road.
And I would rather not see asphalt trucks tied up in traffic on the line. That's my take. You know, I don't want it to get cold, too cold before it gets here, it's just no good way to get here. I just, I just don't see it coming.
That's a good, good piece of information to add to the.
So Springfield gets theirs from that side.
Yeah.
Cause they worked with Peck.
Yeah.
And all states who will be here fixing our pavement and finishing our pavement. They'll, they get theirs out of the east, out of.
Yes, theirs comes from Swansea, New Hampshire.
So they're gonna have to deal with that as it is.
Yeah, if the, if traffic stays like it is on the line, it will get stopped three times before it gets here.
Any questions about the paving bids? Does somebody wanna make a motion?
Whoa.
Make a motion, we accept the bid of seventy seven fifty from Springfield, seventy seven fifty per ton from Springfield.
How much are we spending on?
Second.
Well, we have. We're gonna accept it, it's, it's, it's assuming that the budget passes. Cause it's for.
That's right.
So it's six hundred thousand dollars in this year's capital budget for paving.
Alright, so we're gonna pay as much as we can.
Yeah.
Whatever we approve.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, unanimous, um, so they know that this is base, this is for next fiscal year, right?
Yeah, they know.
They know, and hopefully they'll get here before our November.
I talked to him, he gave me a, wants to start in June. So, you know, he.
Well, once we approve it, he can start, he just can't get the shot until July.
I just, you know, he knows that, I told him that.
Yeah.
Something does lie, but wants to start in June.
Uh, he's gonna.
Get us done, that'd be awesome.
And all state, ones all state gonna come and do the repairs.
They're gonna come and do the grinding that they needed to do. After Memorial Day. In Valley View, then it needs to sit for a couple of weeks, then they can go through and do their resurfacing, people out.
Very good, anything else Travis?
That's it.
Thank you very much. The next we're gonna discuss is consider, under unfinished business, the draft select board attendance policy. So, I'm gonna hand this, hand this over to Sarah who did the research and wrote um the draft attendance policy.
So I contacted V L C T um to talk to them about how select boards are paid around the state. And I was sent the master um salary, there's a huge spreadsheet that has for every responding town, every single paycheck. Through the, through the town. And discussed it with the person who compiled the report, there are no um select boards that would use a system. That's pegged to a percentage of attendance. There are a number of select boards that use a stipend per meeting. Um. But I think given the different kinds of meetings that we are called on to attend and the potential variability of the number of those meetings. The, the per meeting stipend becomes really unwieldy and really hard to control, um. I, I also spoke with um an attorney at V L C T who suggested that um. That using either a stipend or a flat. Um, amount, which is what we've been doing, is preferable, the, the percentage. Would be legal, but would be unwieldy. And his reaction was he would rather see something that was based, was not based on a punitive system. Which is what it would be if we did, went with a percentage, so um. So instead of trying to rewrite how we're paid, um, Vicki and I had a conversation and thought that perhaps spelling out. What the requirements for the, for the job are, not just for us, but for any future. Board members to see clearly what's expected of us. Um, and have a policy, you know, because I think we all have a, an understanding, but having it written gives us a, a formal policy.
So, um, it's basically Sarah wrote this, this draft and I, you did email it to the whole board, right? Or no?
I, I emailed it to Jeanette.
Who sent it out with the attachments, um, did everybody have a chance to look at it?
No, I didn't look at it.
Didn't look at it and get it.
I didn't get it either.
Was in your packet, so it's okay, Scott is not here tonight, and I think that the whole board should be here to um.
Even this water softener.
Discuss it and potentially adopt it, um, it's basically. Asking that people should attend a minimum goal of eighty percent of meetings, uh, we asked that it. That it is recommended the board members review material supplied prior to the meeting, at which is gonna be discussed. In addition to the meetings noted, each board member is expected to serve as a liaison to at least two town departments. And to be available to the heads of those departments as needed. The head of their department should know their liaison is and the circumstances under which they should be contacted. The select board chair shall include attendance figures in the annual town report and order for the electorate. Electorate to be aware of various members' performance and contribution and board responsibilities. So if we adopt this, the select board chair would put it, uh, basically, this select board member attended so many meetings, uh, percentage wise. Um, it's understood that the service of the select board includes more than just meeting attendance. From time to time, individual board members may be called on to prepare or review board documents. Research proposal and or write responses to request for information from the public. In addition, members are expected to respond to the office manager in a timely manner. While we do not count towards, these don't count towards attendance goals, they're an integral part of the board's responsibilities. And the board cannot perform its tasks without the commitment, that commitment, therefore, each board member is expected to contribute to background work described. So it's not really an attendance policy, it's basically board adopting their own internal expectations.
It's formalizing what we all kind of understood our job to be anyway, but it's putting it in writing, which I think also is gonna be helpful. Eventually, you know, all of us are gonna be leaving the board at some point and people are gonna be coming in, this gives them a clearer definition of what's involved.
So since we have a couple of board members who didn't read it and one not here, uh, can we get this on the agenda for the next meeting? Um, when we're doing our reorganizational and also. At what, and potentially adopt this as, as, yes.
So you're gonna add it to your rules and procedures that we adopt every year as well?
Uh, I think we need to discuss it, uh, but we can, it should certainly, it, it fits into that.
Become part of that.
Yeah. Is it good, everybody good with that?
Yep.
So I.
Um, thank you, Sarah, for putting in the time and the research on this, I, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, there, Joe?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, new business, continue, continue, sorry, consider, consider continued support for Wild and Scenic Rivers Act. So this is. I guess I was not as aware as I should have been that this is a, a, a bill they're introducing into Congress. Um, so Curtis, Chris Curtis is writing to see if we. If we support this bill, which would make. Would amend the Wild and Scenic Rivers Act to direct the Secretary of the Interior to conduct a study of the Deerfield River. For potential addition to the National Wild and Scenic River System and for other purposes. So that is what this is, it includes the Deerfield River in Vermont and Massachusetts and the major tributaries, which. Um, were the North Branch and. They're asking that no later than three years from the date of which funds are made available to carry out this paragraph, which is. Which is to, to study these, the Secretary of the Interior shall. Basically submit to the committees in Congress describing the results of this study. Um, so, does anybody have any comments about continuing our support for the Wild and Scenic Rivers? Uh, and particularly the Deerfield River? Does anybody have any positive or negative? Yes, Jeanette, please.
Well, I know previously, I think it was about a year ago, we did send a letter of support to this gentleman, um.
Yes.
Committee, um, so he said he doesn't, he's not requesting another letter of support, just basically an email. You know, stating that we are still continuing our support, um, for this, this bill to go through.
And who knows where this is gonna go, I mean, this is going to, to Congress, so.
Disappear.
Any, anybody want to send an email saying we, we still support it?
I think a motion is send an email to the gentleman that we still support it, because we told him.
Any. Anybody don't wanna second that?
Sure, I'll second it.
I don't know why we shouldn't. Anybody have any comments, public? Okay. All in favor? unanimous. Okay. Alright, economic development. Eric, the third Q three update. Eric?
I was saying, sorry, I was muted, I said I will pass the mic to Shannon for this one.
Thank you.
Um, I did send an update when we received our one percent payment in February, so that's what leaves this off. Um, so in February sixteenth, we received one hundred and eighty nine thousand. Four hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty one cents, um, so that is up sixty three percent from last year. Um, but more importantly, ten percent, um, from twenty twenty. Um, so that's the big news, uh, everything else is just an update on our actual spend, um, to budget so far for the year.
Does anybody have any questions of Shannon? About the update? Okay. Moving on to the historical driving tour, and I see Jim Tassadi's here as well. Eric, do you wanna start?
Yeah, so, uh, the last time Jim came to see us, we asked him for some additional information, um, I think. Uh, even some of the original documentation he sent regarding design might have gotten. Lost in the shuffle of, of the first stack of information that I sent. Um, so that's in there, uh, in this packet as well that I sent to you guys, I believe there's one copy on the table if. Uh, you guys didn't get a chance to look at it. Um, so basically Jim. Um, you are looking for a total grant request from the town of Dover of four thousand four hundred and fifty four, or five hundred and forty five dollars, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, I did receive an email from our missing select board member. Uh, asking, one, that, um, it seems a lot of the quotes that are provided say up to this amount. Um, you know, I think even the quote on, on printing and things like that was overestimated, just to make sure that everything would be covered. Um, he did have a concern that we didn't overpay for. You know, things that, if they do come in under budget, so I think, you know, if, if we do move forward, he would wanna, or we would wanna, um. You know, pay those invoices as they come in, as long as that works for the project, uh, and then his other point was that. He would like to see, he, he didn't see the mention of the QR codes, which was brought up in the conversation last time. Um, and he did mention that that would be a way for us to be able to. You know, I, you, you talk in your presentation or in your, in your packet here about. You know, the possibility of adding additional kiosks later down the road. And something like a QR code would allow us to track whether or not, you know, people are. Accessing that information from these kiosks to an extent. I mean, I understand a lot of people are just going to read them while they stand there, but, um, it would help us to get an idea. Of usage if they could scan that QR code to get additional information from the website. Uh, later down the road, so those were the points that Scott wanted me to bring up. Um, other than that, you know, our department is in, uh, in favor of this request, I think it's, um. You know, so it's, it's not a. It's not a huge expense to get, uh, to get us in, and I think it just provides another. Activity for, you know, family and, and history buffs to enjoy while they're here in Dover.
In terms of the budget, um. I don't think we're gonna ask for any more money than that, um. We, I've already spent a lot of time talking to vendors and whatnot, and it seems like. Some of the ideas that I had, for instance, uh, that was gonna involve a metal fabricator for. Stabilizing the bases and whatnot, he came up with a whole different plan other than what I had come up with, and quite frankly, it was gonna be cheaper. Uh, so. Then I'm also. I've gotten in touch with Panier, we're trying to see if they'll make the, uh, legs for the. Kiosk longer. Uh, so that we can get low crossline. And if they do that, then we'll be well fabricated, so. So, you know, we're, we're trying to find ways around the various elements of this in order to try and save some money. Uh, Susan had informed me this afternoon. Uh, she just returned from Florida and this morning, I guess, and opened a. A grant that she had applied for from the Guild of the Wingland International Baccalaureate Schools. And they received a grant of five hundred dollars to participate in this. Uh, and one of the questions she had was. Who's gonna be handling money, whether it would be Eric or whether it be the Living History Association, I don't know, I didn't know. So, um, so that's something that needs to be turned it out because, um. Depending on who is gonna do that, uh, that money should go to that. And, uh, I said, I, it doesn't matter who it goes to, because it's all gonna have to be a counter for anyone. So I don't know, other than the information that I've already submitted, that's about it.
Okay, so I think, Vicki, do you mind, sorry?
No, absolutely.
Okay, so I think what, what, um, Mr. Salway was getting at is, you know, he reads, for example. Uh, the email from Mr. Capitani stating. You know, I'd rather bid high and come in under than the other way, so I think what he was saying is if we get an invoice. You know, for this printing job and it's under what was originally bid, like, we don't wanna just hand out a check. To Living History for the original bid amount when it comes in under, so. That being said, I think, you know. We would provide. And as long as the board would be okay with this, if we, if we decide to move forward, I mean, provide the funding up to that amount. And then you can submit those invoices to us. For payment on the project as they come in, if you wanted us to take that five hundred dollars and. Put it on the line item the same as we would spend. Um, you know, the town money, we can absolutely do that for you if that simplifies bookkeeping, uh, from that end, but, you know, we. I don't, I don't wanna just cut a check for four thousand five, five hundred and forty five dollars and then have to deal with going back after to say, well, this invoice came under. And this came under, so now we want the money back, like, if, if. The board is okay with it and we do move forward, I would just say that you submit those invoices to us. And that we reimburse, or we pay for those invoices directly, does that work?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I should have a meeting with her sometime in the next week or so. Find out exactly where we are with the research and, and, uh. With this grant, I'm probably gonna have to meet with you on a QR code thing. Uh, because they had talked about doing that as well, and, uh, but I, at this point, I'm not sure exactly how it's gonna work, so.
It, so it literally takes. You would, you would find what website you wanted those people to land on and there. Just about eight billion free websites to create a QR code, so we could use one of those, we could even put. You know, that you can even put logos like. Living History Association or Dover School or any of those things can actually live in those QR codes as well, so it's. It's marketing all around, but it, it takes two seconds and would just drive them to, uh, you know, a, a website of your choice.
So should we reduce the town's expenditure to four, four thousand forty five dollars?
I have a question.
What?
The, sorry, I wasn't. We're. I'm looking at the estimate of the kiosk cost, why is Dover paying? More than three quarters of that total amount?
The reason why is because, uh, down in Wilmington, they already have four kiosks. They're gonna, with their grant money, they're gonna be putting up another one. So that'll make five. And most of their money was geared toward, uh, event promotion in conjunction with this. As well as advertising promotion in general for the tour. Um, so they have, are going to invest fifty one hundred dollars is what their, their. Grant right now says.
So you're saying that, that there's only one kiosk because they already have a bunch of kiosks?
Yes, and, and they too would consider other kiosks as time goes on. They wanna see how this goes, and we all do, I mean, we wanna see how this works first and. And, uh, before we decide to go off and do more.
Okay, so I asked a question, Eric, should we just reduce the amount that we're gonna pay by five hundred dollars and Dover School? Won the grant?
Jim, did, so with that five hundred dollars from the grant. Or if we were to reduce to five thousand and, you're, sorry, four thousand and forty five dollars, is, is, will that cover your expenses?
Well, see, I don't know, because. She didn't get in any detail in terms of what she was giving that money for, she said it could be used on the project. But exactly what that means, I'm not sure, so. Again, you go back to the fact that you're gonna approve a certain amount of money. And you're only gonna pay for those things that we actually spend. So, I, I don't know, I think you ought to do whole forty five hundred dollars and, and, um. And then if we don't use it, we don't use it.
But then basically, we're gonna use five thousand forty five dollars potentially. Because we're, we're overfunding, I mean, as I said, some of this stuff is already padded.
It would not be my intent to look for other things to pay for. It's my intent to look for is to get the, the price down as much as I can, so. Um, so again, I have to have a meeting with her, we, we talked about that, next week we're gonna try and get together. And, uh, I can find out more about this grant at that time. But if you approve forty five hundred dollars now, you know, I, I, I'm not gonna go willy nilly trying to get rid of forty five hundred dollars, just to simply get.
Anybody from the board have any other comments about this or questions?
Um. It says the, like, design, choosing graphics. Sort of the, some of the soft services, um. It looks like somebody's being paid to do those things, who's getting paid for that?
Um, there is a guy that we've used before for, uh, this logo. Um, that, uh, Mr. Kesgiddich. Who has done a lot of our graphics and whatnot before, we would be paying him.
Okay, so he'd be doing the graphic design, the layouts, the material accumulation.
Well, we've got some other people that are gonna be involved in this too, I mean, the, the school is doing most of the material accumulation. I'm doing some of it, we've got another guy who's a computer whiz, who's gonna get involved in this as well, so. Um, exactly, you know, if, if, I can't tell you that that amount of money is gonna go to one person. If they go, and they end up getting spread out and they just go to one person, it depends on who wants to volunteer their time. So, I mean, we're, we're looking for them to volunteer their time, but I can't guarantee that.
And I, I was not at the meeting, Jim, when you first presented this. Um, what, what's the timeline on this, how, how quickly are these kiosks gonna be installed?
I'm hoping to get them installed by the end of the summer. The thing is, is that if they're gonna do a project next year. Through this school program, um, to do any other kiosk, I gotta have these done first, so. So, I mean, we're, we're, we're looking at before the school year gets, you know, too far into it. Next year, so, I mean, it's either gonna be the end of August or the beginning of September.
Alright.
There's also money in here for, um, digging the holes and, you know, maybe. You can have, uh, the town do that, you know, and then that money goes away too, we don't have to spend that.
Well, I think we'll have to consider that when we get closer to the time of the project, because right now it's kind of, uh, nebulous. So we can't, can't necessarily commit to that, but we certainly would like the opportunity to potentially dig the holes. To save some money. Uh, does anybody wanna make a motion to, uh. To approve four thousand five hundred and forty five dollars to the, to, towards this project for the scenic driving?
Historic driving?
Yes.
So moved.
I make, well, I'd like to amend the motion to up to four thousand five hundred forty five dollars.
Wait, Joe had said so moved, so would you?
That's fine.
So Joe accepts the amendment.
Hold on, hold on, whoa, can, you, you accept that amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so the amendment, the motion is to approve up to. Oh my goodness. And do I have a second?
I second it.
No, she, she asked for amendment.
But we, it hadn't been seconded yet, so Dan doesn't, Dan's now seconding.
Yeah.
The amended motion.
amended motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sarah, so just, I'm abstaining.
No.
Your statements.
Yes. Because there's a quote in here from the, from Mr. Capitani, so I am abstaining. Okay. Is there, uh, we have to consider chair repairs at Dover Park, is this our big artistic chair?
It is, so. I had run into Dave at the town park when we were discussing other things that will be on future agendas. Uh, and a conversation was started about the current state of our large painted chair. Um, we are. At least ten, maybe more years removed from chi, big chairs, no? Um, and it's, uh.
Two thousand fourteen.
Okay, so not ten, eight years removed, just feels like ten, um. The, the chair is showing its age, it's, Dave's made plenty of repairs to it. At this point, he's gotta move it a couple of times a year to get it into the gazebo for the winter and back out onto the lawn in the summer. Um, you know, we have screws popping out, there's boards popping out, Dave's done his best to fix it. Travis, did he have any, I asked him to share any comments with you that he would like shared with the board, did he give you anything?
Same, just the same as what you have noted.
Okay.
Is it dangerous?
People climb all over it to take pictures and such, so. And he's done his best to keep it up, but it's like, like Eric said, it's showing its age and it's.
So.
Moving it and the weather and everything else, it's.
Can it make one more summer?
I would say probably.
I mean, I think that we're gonna, we're gonna move it, move it out anyway, as long as it's not a danger. Um, if they're not screws sticking straight, I mean, things like that. There's, there's still chairs from other, of other, um, at other properties around the valley. So, can we put, have we put it out yet?
We haven't put it out yet.
Eric?
So, yeah, I mean, if that's the route we're going to take, I would recommend, you know, we we've, we move it out this summer. Um, make any repairs, you know, that would be necessary to keep it from being a safety hazard. Um, and then when it is time to declare end of life on said chair, um, you know, I had recommended to Dave, you know, the possibility of us not destroying or, you know, getting rid of the entire chair and maybe trying to save the actual, like, back piece that's painted and hang it somewhere or or do something with it that isn't necessarily a giant chair. Um, but I think, you know, it is artwork and something that we paid for and um, does represent the town of Dover and has for a number of years now, so even when we decide to, you know, call it on the chair, I wouldn't want to see the entire thing go away, because I believe that, um, even if those, you know, take, take the fifteen minutes or whatever to push those lats on the back together and make it like a large paint, painting piece, and we can hang that somewhere else, so. Um, if we are gonna hang on to it for the summer, like I said, just have Dave make those repairs to make sure that it's not a safety hazard where it is.
Does anybody have any other comments about that? I think that's a good recommendation, because I think that that town hall, and it was, it was done by Deanna Diaz-Barno, and, uh, we didn't pay for that. And I have a chair in my garage at the office, a big one like that, that was only out a couple summers, so I'd be willing. It's just taking up space. We'd love to get it out of there, so, um, it's from that same competition.
Yeah, so I mean, even that could be an option, you know, to say, if it's the base of our chair that's in rough shape, I mean, maybe we can Frankenstein a chair together, um, you know, to try and.
Because really, it's just taking up space and it's been in my, it hasn't come out of the garage in like six years, so.
I may, so I may end up actually sending Dave down there to see if we may have options.
Very good.
Okay.
All right, everybody in favor of that?
Sure.
Yeah, good.
And then the only other thing.
Sorry, Jeanette wanted to know what was on ours. It's a tree and a chalkboard, so the kids could write on it, so. Yes, Eric.
And then, so if we're done with that, the only other thing that I forgot to get into FYI is, um, a reminder about the Southern Vermont Economy Summit, uh, which is tagged in, uh, Cultivate Change this year. That happens next Thursday, um, pretty much all day up at Mount Snow. There will be a riveting presentation from your Economic Development Department.
I saw that. I saw that you guys were presenters.
On our efforts and, uh, future efforts in the town for us, so. Um, if you're free on Thursday, it's a great event. It's, it's good to meet with like-minded people, so definitely join us up at Mount Snow.
I'm registered.
There you go.
Thank you. Um, okay, consent agenda. We're gonna approve the minutes of April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Does anybody have any changes or revisions?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of April nineteenth.
No comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approve the warrants of April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two for one hundred eight thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars and fourteen cents.
Were those sent out?
No, so Joe and I have looked at them.
Okay.
Dan has said he can come down tomorrow and look at them.
I can come down tomorrow.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, and just in future, if if you are not gonna be here to look at them, please let me know and and I could scan them, so you can at least see them.
I don't think we knew so many people wouldn't be here tonight.
I didn't know I was gonna be under the weather.
Right, right, so, but, um, if you guys come down and we will approve them pending your, um, not having any issues with them. Okay, and come tomorrow early if you can. Yes, morning would be good.
What time is somebody in the office?
I could come by in about ten minutes.
Dan's coming by in ten minutes. We may be gone.
We're gone in ten minutes.
Jeanette, who's in the, what time is somebody in the office?
Nine o'clock.
Nine, okay.
If you wanna leave them, I get there at seven thirty.
Oh, perfect, because I have.
Well, okay, yeah.
So I could come before that.
Okay, well, yeah, okay, so.
Dan just left. He's on his way. He just walked away.
All right, so let's vote on these warrants. So, um, let's, let's have a motion to approve the warrants for April thirtieth for one hundred eight thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars, fourteen cents, pending a third member's approval. A third member is viewing and finding no problems.
Can I, can I second that, even though I'm not there?
Yes, of course you can.
Okay, I second it.
All in favor? All right, FYI, pre-town meeting is next Tuesday night at six o'clock at the Dover Town Hall.
Are we zooming?
No zoom, just videoing. We're view, we're not zooming. We voted that last meeting. We're just videoing. Yes. No, so it is not zooming. It is all in person. We will video it and we will put it up on the YouTube site, so somebody can see it.
Would you do that? I think it should be zoomed.
It's.
No, I, I guess I thought it, I thought we were zooming pre-town.
No. No. Let's look at the minutes.
Oh, I know, so I guess when you said recording, I just assumed that was.
No, we're recording it so we can load it to YouTube and somebody can see it. We're, um, gonna have a Trails and Rec Committee meeting on the eleventh at six thirty, which is not their normal night. That's a Wednesday um, because of pre-town meeting. Town meeting will be in, on the seventeenth at ten AM at the Corinthia Base Lodge. And we have a reorganizational meeting on Wednesday, May eighteenth at six thirty, the day after town meeting. So we have a lot of meetings, and we need to get on for the next agenda scheduling, employee reviews for June.
Reorganization, so they're gonna be zoomed?
Yeah. Yeah, no, that would be. And so, uh, can you get employee reviews on, on that May eighteenth? Yes, there we go. We have anything else?
Yes.
Michelle, your hand is.
I have actually raised my hand this time. Just another FYI. I know it's a burning concern for people, but there is a planning commission meeting on Monday, the ninth, at six thirty as well.
Wow, it's a busy meeting week.
Busy, busy, meeting week, yes. Thank you.
All right, so that, we have, we can go to a meeting every night next week, so there we go. All right, thank you, Michelle. Thank you, everybody. I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Was he trying to get on the whole?
At seven forty-eight. And we'll just say hi to Scott and goodbye to Scott.
Hi, Scott.
Hello, Scott.